And Planning Commission for Monday, October 16th, 2017 to order. And with that, I'm going to ask you if you feel like you'd like to stand with me and join in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; give us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. And now we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with God.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. And we have four things here that we need to approve. The first one is a work session that was held on August 21st, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Karen, if you'll call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Gribble. Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Abstained.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye.
The next minutes to approve are for the regular session held on August 21st, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Karen.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Abstained.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye. We have minutes for the work session which were, which was held on September 7th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes for this work session as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Karen, would you call the vote?
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Titlow.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye. And the last minutes to ask for a motion honor for the work session which was held on October 5th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Abstained.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye. Okay.
Before we move on, Chairwoman, may I ask Karen to step into the AV room? We're having problems with broadcasting, apparently. The system is recording, but it's not broadcasting.
Okay.
You want us to hold off just a minute? Um, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I apologize, but that's all. You hate to have it announced that we're going to have a meeting and then it not actually broadcast.
We want it, want it.
Yes, yes.
We'll all sing a cappella or something.
We did start our meeting at 7:00 PM, but due to a broadcasting issue, we slightly paused the meeting so that we could repair our AV equipment and hopefully we are now being broadcast.
Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, we'll open the audience for visitors and of course, this is always the time that someone can come to the podium and address the Planning Commission on item, on any item except for what's on the agenda for public hearing. And as I see not a soul sitting in the audience, I think I'm pretty safe in closing the public hearing and we'll move on to the items on the agenda for public hearing. And we have four public hearing items tonight. And I think, let's see, the first one tonight is the proposed amendment to Section 1-231 of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to accessory structure height. And we have a presentation on that will be by Debbie.
Yes ma'am.
All right.
Yes ma'am. It will be very brief. As you all recall, you first considered an amendment to the accessory building height provisions at your August 1st meeting, following an actual discussion on the matter at your July meeting. Given that the Planning Commission is in general agreement with the fact that we might want to provide some leniency to our accessory building height provisions for our more shallow depth or height, the shallow depth of some of our older homes, we decided to go back and we decided to basically allow for a 20, or one and a half times, a one and a quarter times, excuse me, the height of a principal structure for a one-story building. And at that time, the, the actual ordinance amendment was presented to the Planning Commission. However, in our discussions at the public hearing, it was asked if we had a clear definition of story as it would apply to this leniency to accessory buildings. That caused the planning, or the planning staff to go back and kind of research our ordinance and found that there were a couple of definitions such as story and half-story as it applies to structures did not seem to be up to date and it needed some revisions. So therefore, we had decided just to re-present the overall height allowance for accessory buildings as originally proposed to you. We decided to amend that provision and re-present it to you this public hearing. Now what we're proposing, instead of tying an accessory building height to the primary structure by whether or not it's story, one or two stories, we decided that we would just establish a particular or a specific height. And that height is 25 feet or less. Therefore, if your access, or if your primary structure measured 25 feet or less, then you would be given an opportunity to build an accessory structure, which could either be a shed or a garage, up to one and a quarter times the overall height structure, provided that the accessory building does not exceed 25 feet in height. So that would give some of our older homes an opportunity to have a little bit taller structure and maybe have like a half-story in their building as opposed to just meeting the, the current requirement that restricts the height of an accessory structure to the height of the main house. With that provision, we've presented that to you this evening for public hearing and consideration. The code amendment as written has been presented in your agenda as a resolution to recommend to City Council.
All right, thank you Debbie. Anyone have any questions of Debbie before we open the public hearing? She'll be here, of course, we need her. All right, for a little while. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and we'll open the public hearing on this item. And we have no one that wishes to speak, so we're going to close this public hearing and the Planning Commission will take this under consideration.
Is Dan gonna present it?
Oh. What Debbie presented.
No, that's all right, I'm just gonna be running the presentation.
I think he may have said something in a minute, but I think we were ready, weren't we? Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and take it under consideration. Have any discussion on this item?
I would simply say that it made sense the last time. I feel kind of bad because I will admit that I'm the one that asked that question and apparently has created staff a significant amount of work, which I did not intend to do, but in reading, you know, I guess it, one of those things just kind of needed to be done. But I still would, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it's certainly fair and reasonable and I would certainly recommend that we approve it.
All right, so did you want to, are we prepared to make a motion to approve?
Unless, unless anyone else wants to comment before, then I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve it as written.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Karen.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye.
And that carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, and the next item is a proposed amendment to Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the definition of story.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll just give a brief presentation on this and if that's all right, I'd like to run the presentation for both of these definition changes together since they kind of go hand in hand.
Okay, that'll be fine.
So as Deborah just stated, this amendment for accessory structures was brought to the Planning Commission and I believe it was Commissioner Travis that brought up the question of the definition of story. We went back at the code and after that meeting and discovered that in Article 1, Section 1-3, that this is the current definition of a story in the zoning ordinance. As you can see, it's a little long. It's somewhat awkwardly worded. The definition, the second part of the definition starts talking about a mezzanine. Mezzanines are not defined in our current zoning ordinance, so we would need to define this. Also, there is this language at the end, which is somewhat unnecessary, talking about what counts as a story, if a basement or cellar is finished or is a dwelling for janitorial or domestic servant staff. We found that was not necessary to have in our current definition of a story. Therefore, what we are proposing, proposing tonight is to change the definition to this. We have stricken the last two parts of the definition and so the, the new definition would read that a story is that portion of a building other than an unheated cellar, basement, or attic included between the surface of any floor and the surface of the floor next above it. Or if there is no floor above it, then the space between the floor and the ceiling next above it. The distinction that it is an unheated space was made and was considered to be appropriate by our building official as a good definition of what constitutes living space. Similarly, the definition of a half-story, we found this was also somewhat awkwardly worded, so we changed, we are proposing to change it to the following, again stating that it is a heated space under a sloping roof which has the line of intersection of roof decking and wall face not more than three feet above the top floor level and in which space the floor area does not exceed 33% of the total heated space of the ground floor. So those are the two proposed definitions.
I have a question. Is it appropriate to ask now?
Yes.
I'm not sure I am clear on what you mean, not more than three feet above the top floor level, but what exactly, can you explain that to me, what you mean there?
Like when you have a pitched roof and the side of it, like a.
Like a knee wall?
Right.
Are you speaking to a knee wall, basically? My only comment would be from an appraisal perspective, in any home that has a knee wall less than five feet, according to American standards of calculations, it would not be included in square footage. So it, as, that can make a significant difference in terms of, I brought the ANSI standards with me when I was reading this today, which requires a seven-foot vertical from floor to ceiling and a minimum of five feet knee walls. And if any of you live in half-stories today and have an appraisal on it for a mortgage or refinance of any kind, the appraiser would likely be measuring it to a five-foot knee wall, so I don't know how that plays into this being three feet. That out there.
And actually, that, the wording in that was something that we just researched other localities to kind of.
Okay, well, I'm just saying if, if I were tight on this particular requirement, I had an appraisal in hand where it said this is the square footage of this half-story, because it is measured to the ANSI standard, it could, it could make a difference. So I don't know that, as York County does it, that that would make it necessarily correct, but I think you should take into account, this is, it is a voluntary organization, but most builders do adhere to this method for calculating square footages. I do think that should be considered because it could be a bone of contention at some point in time if you're measuring to, I mean, you have been into some homes that have knee walls as short as a foot. And I mean, really, three feet, you really cannot do anything with a three-foot. Most, most people could not use it. They may throw a, it's even hard to put a piece of furniture up there. I do think it should be considered.
That's a good point. We'll open it up for conversation with the Planning Commission. Consideration of this portion of the ordinance amendment. Maybe at your December meeting for reconsideration.
All right, so now that would be the end of yours' presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to open the public hearing on this. At this time, no one is going to speak, so we're going to close the public hearing and now we're going to take it under consideration. And now with, with Libby's thoughts there, that kind of may throw a little different slant on. Good point.
I think, if, and I could be wrong, because I'll be honest with you, you're way out of my league now. I think the question of the first item here, the definition of story, I think is probably still clear, is that right? I think we're just talking about the half-story.
Yeah, I'm clear as to what a story is. It has to be.
I think we have two items, I think the story is item number two, I think is, well, from my perspective, is fine.
But the half-story in the third.
She raised a question that I, I'm going to defer to because I'm not even sure I know what a knee wall is, but.
But in, but the story.
The story, I think is fine.
Are we okay on that?
I was.
All right, and that's the one we're now on, so do we want a motion to accept this one?
I'll so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, Karen, we're voting on number two here, story.
Story. Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye.
And that motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, now, number three, which we have had the presentation on in definition, but we are now taking up the matter, proposed amendment to Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the definition of half-story. We will open the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and now we will talk about this one. This is the one that seems to have the little, little difference here, or questionable. So what is your?
I think, I think if there's an ANSI standard, that that's, it seems like it would be a really good reference to, to utilize.
I think so too. So do we want to, as Debbie said, table this Debbie, is that what you said?
I think what you would need to do is to postpone it.
Postpone it.
It's very possible that what we will ultimately do, if we end up making changes, you know, editing the, the language that has been presented, we will most likely re-advertise. So it will be basically a brand-new item for your, but for purposes of us just continuing the public hearing, postpone it at this evening's meeting, that would help to keep us on track with the process itself.
Okay, now, where we have, okay, we've sent.
The public hearing, opened it and closed it. That's okay, you're just postponing consideration.
All right, so do we want to postpone this? Is that what, I mean, because we need to vote on it.
Yes.
So do, does someone make a motion to postpone?
Yeah, I make a motion to postpone item number three for the definition of half-story.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Karen.
Okay, Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye.
And that motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you. Now, the last thing, last proposed amendment is number four here, proposed amendment to Section 1-320 of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to covered boat slip size.
That would be Karen.
This is kind of a housekeeping measure. You might remember a few years ago, we did, we refined the covered deck. That was to be in line with VMRC's requirements, or state requirements. And in this case, it's been brought to our attention that the state actually allows a 700 square. What we allow right now is an 18 by 36, so we find the dimensions of it and that totals about 648 square feet. So this would be allowing a little bit more than that, figure it however you wanted to to meet that 700 square feet. And we add, unless specifically permitted by, by VMRC. Because what I found in my research, VMRC, if they, if someone comes in with an application to build something larger than that, they require that all the adjacent property owners be notified. So it would basically be the same thing as if we took them through the board rather than have them repeat that twice. We would, we would go with that, this, unless otherwise. VMRC does not take jurisdiction over man-made canal. Those to do covered boat slip larger than, would require BZA approval.
All right, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this proposed amendment and we'll close the public hearing. The Planning Commission will take this under consideration.
I have a question. How many man-made waterways do we have in the city?
Oh, I couldn't tell you right off. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Just about every subdivision that's waterfront would have at least one man.
So they comply with the VMRC?
VMRC does not regulate man-made canals.
I realize that, but as our, in terms of the dock attached, is that similar to, or is that our own? Like you can't, us, the width of the.
And the Corps of Engineers actually kind of dictates that. So we have several different entities that look at requests for docks and boats.
I'm not against it, I'm just kind of curious. In other words, what, what, who decided that would all of a sudden become more of a, you know, that you have to tell everybody else about versus 800 or 800. Or is it the size of it, or is it the pitch, or, I mean, I'm kind of, or is it just some, to the best of your knowledge, is it just a number that was kind of put into regu?
I don't know how it ever came about and I don't know that it's a change that VMRC has made. All, it's been something to our attention that was just, we were not in, you know, conforming to what VMRC regulates and.
I don't have any problems with it at all, but I'm just kind of curious. Oh my gosh, 725. In other words, you know, I mean, did somebody at one point, was that a size that was a sticking point, or, I don't know. Because the thing is, if there was one there and it was bigger and people didn't know about it, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to say that I knew it was going to look like that. I have no idea what a 700-foot, you know, I mean, not, again, I don't really want to change anything, I'm just kind of curious.
There's a couple advantages to the proposed changes and I can help hopefully provide some understanding as where this code amendment originally came from. I was the author of it back in the day. Based on a lot of research at that time, it, talking to various marine contractors, 18 by 36 was kind of the standard size that was needed to cover the boats of that day. And what we're hearing now is that the boats have gotten larger and so therefore, they would like the flexibility of maybe extending length of it, not necessarily the width. So with us lining up with VMRC, what it's ultimately doing, it's taking out a public hearing process for the city, for the, for the residents to go through and it all puts it in VMRC's hands if it's on naturally waters. If it's on man-made and they're still exceeding that 700 square feet, then they still have to go through a public hearing process, but it would only be one public hearing process and it would be the local process instead of it going through the state. So regardless if they exceed that 700 square feet, regardless of natural or man-made, they still have to go through a public hearing process. We're just eliminating one process for the natural areas or the natural waterways.
Is 15 feet the standard height? Is that what VMRC recognizes 15 feet?
I actually had a conversation with the VMRC permitting fellow and I guess the reassurance was the adjacent property owners need part of the permitting process if it exceeds the 700. So I think as long as we've got that, waterways, you know, we, we'll be.
And again, it will have to comply with all the public notices to include paper publication as well as the adjacent property owners receive, plus we also post a sign on the property. So hopefully, no one will feel like that we were circumventing their due, you know, their ability to speak out.
An issue for environmentalists and the, the issue of shading on the, the, that that has on the natural seagrasses. And as we know, natural seagrasses are one of the protection against erosion and shore erosion. But the gentleman at VMRC assured me that, you know, that the science hasn't.
Any more discussion or we're prepared to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to be accepted. It, it seems to make a lot of sense to me, not being a boat owner. Well, I mean, I have no frame, frame of reference, I have to sort of.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver.
Aye.
That vote was carried by, that motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, all right, so that kind of brings us to the end of the items on the agenda for public hearing. And with that said, I guess that's the end of our meeting with the exception of communications and correspondence, which, Debbie, did you have anything you needed to?
No, the only thing I was going to add, because Dan can talk about the, in your next regular session, which keep in mind that your next regular session will be on December the 4th. Well, no, we combined the November and December meetings to a meeting at the 1st of December. So if you have any public hearing items, we will definitely be meeting and we'll keep you abreast of what, what the status is.
Dan?
Well, on the subject of the comprehensive plan, our next work session at 6 o'clock on Thursday will be this Thursday, October 19th, I believe. And we will be discussing Chapter 6, which is Community Facilities and Recreation. We should have sent out copies of that chapter to all of you. We're hoping to have a representative either from Economic Development or from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to help explain some of their changes. As Section 2 of that chapter was not really written by me, it was an effort by the Parks and Rec Board to kind of provide their own input to the comprehensive plan. Other than that, the next chapter will be infrastructure, road and utility infrastructure. Other than that, the next chapter will be infrastructure, road and utility infrastructure that will take place in November, two weeks from now. The only other thing I would ask is that I believe that I have received the completed tallies for all the write-in questions and the comments section for the public survey. When I find the time, I'll try and compile those all together into one coherent document that you can all look over.
Thank you. Karen, any... Now, I was negligent tonight when we first convened our meeting. I did not introduce our new member who is here tonight, and her name is Libby Moore Gribble, and she will be representing the Western Precinct. She is, is, I think, probably tonight, we, we see that she brings certainly some knowledge that we may not have, and we're glad to have you on board, Libby. Look forward to serving with you. Okay, anybody, we usually go around here and just start on your end, Libby. We're going to let you start. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we close?
Well, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but I was a little confused about rooms over garages, how they're treated. Have we, have y'all discussed that? How that plays into stories? Does that have any effect on rancher that has a finished heated room over a garage, which typically you're going to have knee walls in those?
That actually was the topic of the discussion that made it, I can revisit the definitions for story and half-story, and to change how we defined what leniency we... Very subject of a bonus room over a garage, or a bonus room over a garage, did that constitute a... Structure. So for simplicity purposes, to, to apply the accessory building provisions as it pertains to height, that's the reason why we decided to go with a specific height instead of using the definition of stories. So the comments that you offered this evening were very helpful. We'll go back and we will look at both of the definitions. Actually, even though you approved the one, we want to make sure that we're... So it may be that both of these definitions may come... But if anything, you know, if you would like to offer some additional information, happy to receive it, and we appreciate what you offer tonight.
Angie?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay.
From coming out strong on your first meeting, good job on your homework. Certainly exceeded what I ever did, I don't even remember. Anyway, good job and happy...
Other?
Yes, around the corner. No comments.
Oh, nothing other than, as I said, welcome aboard.
And I don't have anything more to say, so let's adjourn this meeting. Thank you.